I'd like to call to order this work-study meeting of the School Board of Intensive School districts, 624. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Newmaster.
President.
Strike OG.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan. Here. Daniels.
Here.
Ellison.
Here. Thank you. We'll start with our first discussion, item V1, White Bear Lake Area High School update. Dr. Gillespie and Mr. Reitz.
Chair Ellison, members of the board, I'd like to introduce or reintroduce Russ Reitz, our principal at the high school, who will provide an update tonight for the high school. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Chair Ellison, Directors, Dr. Kazmierczek. My name is Russ Reitz, principal at White Bear Lake Area High School. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with a short update. We'll talk a little bit about our first 60-day instructional focus. I'll share some data with you which drove our planning this summer for opening the new high school. We'll celebrate our evolving culture and then we'll discuss a few of the partnerships, as well as what's next for us in the next 60-day instructional cycle. So I'd like to start with our mission statement. Quite simply, our mission at White Bear Lake Area High School is to influence student belonging and student agency in pursuit of personal excellence. We had staff gather to put together our purpose statement and our objectives and some of our tactics last year, and we are working every day to realize the mission of our building. Our theme to start the school year was around belonging. More specifically, you belong here. We are working every day to help our students answer yes to that question, do I belong? To that end, we had an amazing start to the school year. This picture now hangs in my office. It's a photo of our student body in the gym during our first 9th through 12th grade pep fest in 40 years. So my personal goal to start the school year was to ensure our students feel happy and proud of the time they spend at the high school, and our homecoming week went a long way in helping our students feel a strong connection to each other and to their school. If you were there, this was a goosebump moment, and it really resonated with me what is possible when we have a large, comprehensive 9th through 12th high school and what that student experience could potentially be, and we hope to harness that momentum as we move forward. As I said, our focus, the first 60 days of school, was around, do I belong here? We created instructional, a 60-day instructional cycle that included the introduction of our 5D framework. So this framework is used as our teacher development and evaluation framework. We were especially intentional in our planning and implementation around student engagement and classroom environment. It drove much of the PD that we provided to staff during workshop week. As we built norms to welcome our students into our new spaces, we've also been working really hard on standards-based grading. Our 9th grade students are experiencing a new grade reporting method, as well as all elective courses with a 9th grader. We're working with proficiency scales and having our students get used to this reporting on what they know and can do, right? Their grades reflecting, is more accurately reflecting what a student can know and do. We're also working on our trimester schedule change. So these are our big items that we'll talk a little bit more about as we move through. I wanted to share with you the impact that the five dimensions of teaching and learning is having on our overall school culture, but also on our planning and development of our staff. So as we enter into the first 60-day instructional rotation, we pulled out things from the 5D framework that are directly related to student belonging. Each dimension includes some criteria. We use this criteria to help us evaluate the student experience. We do this by engaging in what we call ROAR walks, so I'm going to talk a little bit about those learning walks and what ROAR means here in a second. But our staff uses a template to collect evidence in each of these nine areas that are on the slide. We spend around 15 minutes in an academic space. We see two spaces at a time, and we then talk about notices and wonderings that we are observing in those spaces. And this is done with teachers and administrators. So we're having a robust dialogue about the student experience and what's happening in our classrooms. And those will continue throughout the year, but much of what we're collecting through these ROAR walks is what's driving then our professional development planning. We had our first full day with staff on October 26th, and we'll have an additional Staff Development Day on November 5th. And again, much of what we're working on with staff comes from the evidence or the wonderings, things we are not seeing yet in class related to belonging in the 5D framework. We're also working with our CIT groups. So these are our collaborative inquiry groups. They're using the 5D framework to aid in their planning. And again, this is around our mission statement of welcoming, belonging, and leading, but also around our four core values. So you'll see the ROAR acronym. Again, it stands for relationships, ownership, awareness, and respect. We also talk a lot about our three questions. And so the first question being, do I belong here? In the next 60-day phase, we'll be leaning more into, is this meaningful? Followed by our last question of, can I do this? That will be the last 60-day instructional phase for our staff. The learning walks are really what allow us to collect the street-level data on how we're doing. We are also able to look into what our staff is sharing with their CIT teams. So what they're recording in their weekly meetings, we're able to analyze and summarize and then set goals that help us. It drives our decision-making around professional development as well. So just to share a little bit with you what these ROAR walks include. These are done with teaching staff, and it really is not to evaluate the teaching staff. It's more to lean into what the students are experiencing. So these walks help us better understand the student experience. That includes how our vision is being implemented or acted on within the classroom. It's meant to calibrate and deepen our understanding. And really what that is, is how is our common language landing with our staff, and how are they turning that into lesson plans that are increasing student engagement and fostering more student belonging? It's also helping us understand how we're doing with our school improvement plan. So we set three goals for our staff. One of those goals is that our students are able to connect with each other, a meaningful staff member in the school, and can point to a class or a co-curricular that they have a strong connection with. And we're learning a lot about how our students are connecting with staff and with each other during these learning walks. And then a little bit more on our CIT teams. Our teachers have been meeting with their CIT team one to two times per week. These teams are made up of mostly grade level and subject alike teams. The focus of the meetings are on that WBL in our mission statement, welcoming, belonging, and leading, as well as relationship building. As we move into Cycle II, middle to end of November, we'll be focusing on ownership and meaning. Ownership, one of those core values, and is this meaningful, that second question. And then again, our last 60-day cycle will focus on self-awareness and self-efficacy for our students. I want to share why this work has been so important to start the school year. Of course, we opened our building with 2,645 students. It was a really cool moment, the first day we had all students 9th through 12th in the building, to stand on top of the learning stairs and look down and see what that actually looks like to have over 2,600 students in our building. But the challenge then with such a large building is, how do we ensure that no student falls through the cracks? How do we work every day to make our really large building feel small? So we really dug into our attendance data, and I don't have any comparison data yet, but we will be comparing first semester attendance this year with our first semester attendance last year. On any given day, over 20% of our students were missing one or more class periods last year. That's around 529 students every day that are missing at least one class. And then during any class period, there's around 265 students that were marked absent a year ago. So we're committed to being a place where our students want to go and learn. And so as this comparison data comes in, we hope to see our attendance rates are increasing, and we're working intentionally, meeting with students that have one or more absences the previous day, to talk about their plan both that day and future days. We're also dealing with a new cellphone plan, so I'll kind of share how that's going here in a second. We have decreased, this is comparison data, so we're able to pull our data for September and October. Our suspensions so far this year have been cut in half. Chemical use has gone down quite a bit there. I have a theory around that. Our students were using a digital pass format, so we know who's out in the hallway with who, and we're also restricting cellphone use when students leave the classroom. And so it's deterring students from being out of class for long, and it's also, they're not able to organize outside of class. But we've seen our fights go down, and we've seen our cellphone referrals go up, of course. We didn't really have cellphone referrals last year. But so far, we've only had to meet 72 students. We've only had two repeat students who haven't complied with the cellphone policy. So it's going remarkably well. Far greater student engagement in classrooms because the phones are away. And you can see there, we've had over 170 individual conversations with students around their daily attendance. And I expect that number to continue to go up. Of course, we're dealing with some students that would rather skip a class so they can have their phone, but we'll continue working through that and on an individual basis. And so far, that seems to be working quite well with our students. But again, I feel like a lot of this data is a direct reflection of how hard we've been working on ensuring that our classrooms are welcoming and belonging for our student body. We have a modified schedule. On Tuesdays and Thursdays this year, our students report to an advisory classroom on Tuesdays for 30 minutes. We're committed to responding to what's happening in our school and to the world around us during advisory. We use this time to share some common language, to build relationships. We ask students to do some self-reflection and work on getting themselves organized for the week. We also have what's called ROAR time. This is really a student choice or flex time that's offered to our students on Thursdays. Again, this is also 30 minutes. And we've added our daily video announcements called the Daily ROAR. I think Tom has come down a couple times, shared some things on Daily ROAR. Is your picture up there?
No.
No, sorry. Next time. But what this is doing is it's highlighting all the amazing things that are happening in school. We're also able to be proactive with our expectations for students and reactive when we don't always meet the standard in our building. So this has gone incredibly well and has been really fun. It's my highlight every morning to work with students on getting those video announcements done. We've added a student-run school store that's increased the amount of school spirit in the building. We've also opened our student-led coffee shop. So again, a lot of this just speaks to the climate and culture of the building, and again, will help us reach that goal of 85% of our students finding a class or a co-curricular that they're passionate about. So each day, students hear about what's going on in our building, what's possible, what's coming up. Groups and clubs and affinity groups all have a chance to promote their program and try to recruit more students into their clubs. So that's been a fun thing with the Daily ROAR. I just wanted to share a few pictures of homecoming week. We had a great week, and to be honest, our students are attending our events and supporting each other. And that's been a really fun part of promoting school pride each day within our four walls. But here you have our band playing Friday morning of homecoming. So our students left for first period listening to the school song being played on the learning stairs. We had coronation on Sunday night, which was student plan and student-led. There's a picture of our student section and then obviously the entire home side during our homecoming game. A very well-attended game and a victory over the Raiders, which was also fun and meaningful. Thought I'd take a moment to highlight some of our community engagement activities. We've been planned, or we have planned so far at the high school. August and October were really busy months for us. We've been giving a lot of tours, which has been really fun, and you realize fairly quickly how big our school is when each tour takes a little over an hour to walk through. But a few of our alumni have returned, the class of '67, the class of 1974. We had a very well-attended family open house, as well as a community open house during that last week in August. And then we've had some programs come through. The, we had a gap exchange program, the German-American partnership program came and spent a couple weeks with us over homecoming and got a real authentic experience for what it's like to go to school in the United States. We presented to the chamber. We've had Rotary out. We even had the Baden-Haiths Economic Development Team come out. The, our pathways program also hosted the Bad, or the, sorry, the state. Is that not on there anymore? Let me see if it's on my slide here. The U.S. State Department and the Pacific Islander Group on October 10th. And they were able to come in and ask questions about our career pathways program and take a tour of our, of all of our classrooms that include some of those pathway courses. So we've had a really great time with outreach and showing off our new facilities. We have a lot to be proud of there. So what's next? We have our next 60-day instructional cycle on question two. We're going to really focus in on purpose and curriculum and pedagogy, two of the dimensions of that 5D framework, which will change kind of what our CIT focuses as well. So our teachers will be aligning with this new 60-day instructional cycle. We'll continue our ROAR walks. We're also working hard on proficiency scales and finalizing our trimester work. So in a couple of weeks, I'll be back to talk about the 29 new courses that have been proposed, the 15 courses we're planning to remove, some additional trimester requests. So just so everybody's aware, a full-year course defaulted to two trimesters under the new schedule. A semester course would be one trimester under the new schedule. We do have some courses that have requested additional time, so we'll talk that through. And there's been some other additional things requested in terms of required credits or additional time that we'll work through together as well, and then several grade level or course title changes. So you can see some dates up there. We're working with our learning leadership team. We'll present to the, to our systems accountability team on October 30th. We'll come back for a school board vote, or a school board work session on November 25th, and then a final vote on December 9th. And then lastly, standards-based learning. So we've worked really hard to get our 9th grade classes ready in any elective course with a 9th grader. We continue to work with our 10th through 12th teachers on identifying focused standards and creating proficiency scales. We're also working on aligning our common assessments with the focused standards and proficiency scales. So that work still continues on those workdays and when we're meeting with our staff in terms of professional development. So I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Reitz? Dr. Arcan?
My first question I have is, how does the advisory or ROAR time improve the academic achievement of our students? I think this is important for people to know.
Yeah. So first, advisory. There is a staff member that's checking in with our students, and so we've provided sort of a self-assessment guide for them to report back to their advisory teacher. If there's an intervention that needs to take place or a core teacher that needs to be addressed, the teacher can either provide or equip that student with some skills to advocate for themselves, or they can actually be the one that reaches out. So that's more of a support-type process. We're also helping our students get more organized for the week during that advisory time, and then they have some time to study in that class. The ROAR time, this is 30 minutes a week, and last year we had what we called bear time, and it was every day at the end of the day. We're doing this between first and second period, and so our attendance and participation is far greater. But during ROAR time, students have choice time. So if they want to sign up to go work with a teacher that they're maybe struggling or have some questions they want help with, they can go get that extra help. They can also go down to the Learning Commons or the Tutoring Center, or go into our Testing Center and retake a test. So those are all ways that we're trying to help our students academically.
And then the only question I have is, both the school store or the coffee house, are we running those with our DECA and are we using a CLA for the coffee house then? So there's a student organization.
Yeah.
So now you're going to get the leadership of that along with the COAR.
Good question. Yeah. DECA's running our school store, and then our school grounds is run by our family consumer science class. Yeah. They're getting their served safe license certification, so.
That's great.
Ms. Davis.
Can you talk a little bit about the ROAR walks? Are those administrators or leaders walking through classrooms and observing the observations of students and staff and just kind of helping do some reflection? If they see something that is great, or if they see something that made the teachers struggle, so that's, in the old days, we used to do teacher observations, and we had somebody a year that we would get how the teachers are evaluated. Is this kind of in place of that?
It's separate from our teacher development and evaluation process. So we're still doing those more formal observations and really working individually with the teacher on next steps or, you know, some wonderings that we'd like to see. The learning walks are more for evaluating what the student experience is like in that room. So we aren't providing direct feedback to the teacher. It's at least one administrator. It's at least one instructional coach, and at least one teacher from our learning leadership team. In most cases, it's four people, two administrators, a teacher, and an instructional coach. And then we're in two spaces, each for 15 minutes. We have a template that we're following for documenting what we're noticing and wondering. It's evidence-based, so there's a little bit of training that goes into what we're looking for. And then the most important part is the dialogue with, between the four afterwards. You're having a collegial conversation about best practice instruction. And then we're using a summary of those meetings to drive our staff meetings and our future professional development days. It's been a really cool addition, and Joe Held has done an amazing job getting us organized, and he's, not just because he's here tonight. He really has. He's, his title is Associate Principal of Teaching and Learning, and he has done an incredible job with our instructional cycles and making sure we're aligned across all those different areas, CITs and learning walks and PD days. And so, yeah, it's been great.
It's so valuable, especially for some of our new teachers too. I mean, it'd be so awesome as a teacher to have colleagues come through and reflect and to support what you're doing in the classroom and observing what the students, and you know, the activity of the teachers now and your instructions. So it's great.
Yeah. It's fun to be in classrooms. So the visibility of all of those are, have been great as well.
Mr. OG.
So I had a question on how and who are working with kids proactively around the rationale to not have phones?
To not have phones.
Yeah.
So advisory was kind of the first stop at delivering some common language around the, really the essential why, and what this decision means for students, and sort of explaining the why it was so necessary, right? What we hope to see from it. And then we talked a lot about cellphone use on the Daily ROAR. We also have some norms in each classroom. So in most classes, I hope, you could tell me more, teachers give that general reminder, okay, it's time to put phones away. And then there's one more subtle reminder if a student doesn't comply before we get into any sort of reactive-type referral-type situations. But there's so many interactions and, you know, to only have 70-some referrals so far when there's 2,600 students that all have six classes in a day, there's a lot of potential for a referral to be written. But for the most part, our students are complying, and on the ROAR walks, we aren't seeing phones out at all. And I think anecdotally, the, my favorite comment of the year was, for the first time in years, I'm asking my students to quiet down, and it feels pretty good. So I think student dialogue is up and collaboration is up, and so that means the engagement is much higher, not that the phones are away.
It just seems like it would be really good on their social emotional health to put those away for a while.
And it's reflected in our behavior issues during the school day as well. We're not dealing with as many of the social media things after school either. So hopefully, we keep that going.
Ms. Thompson.
How they asked some of the questions, so just a couple of like follow-ups or things that I think are great. One, I'm a fan of not having bear time at the end of the day. I think that's definitely going to improve our attendance. Even if students weren't necessarily in a specific class at that time, in the school is the best place for them to be during the school day, so I'm thankful for that. And then I like talking about the walks and not, not taking down what you're seeing, that immediate thing, and then telling the teacher, well, here's all the things we saw you're doing, not maybe necessarily wrong, but that we noticed that we're noting for the future, and then bringing it to professional development and not calling out teachers specifically, but then just highlighting areas where everyone can improve is going to be, I think, I think would be beneficial to everybody because, you know, nobody wants to be told what you're doing, this, these are all the bad things that we see you doing, not even necessarily bad, but just things that we noticed that maybe are, you know, not necessarily good ways to engage with students. So to just bring that into the professional development without calling out every single thing specifically should help just improve and let teachers grow without feeling like, oh, gosh, you know, and especially for new teachers who are just learning and getting the hang of things, or maybe you're switching and teaching a class that you haven't taught for a while, or, you know, whatever it is. So I really like that aspect of not.
And that came out of the Instructional Leadership Academy that some of us were able to attend last year, and we have some more administrators attending this year, but it's evidence-based, nonjudgmental, street-level data is really what we're collecting. And so, yeah, teachers are more easy to, I guess, welcome that method, right, and growing and learning from that, so.
The other piece that I think... The idea to see the data, is that... The other piece that you're tapping into, and I think is important for people to know, is the principals have a huge influence on the academic achievement of our students. Teachers obviously do, but also principals. And so those walks, we'll talk more as the year goes on, what we're doing across the system. Those walks are also to help them with their own leadership as you think about, how do we make sure we're increasing the achievement of all of our students while simultaneously closing the gaps that we have? So both of those things are happening.
That sounds great. Dr. Newmaster.
I'm just thinking about for various advisories and bear times and things like that, that I've participated in at my campus, and I think it's great. The timing of it during the day is always better, between one and first and second seems like a good place to put it and encourage people to be there on time. What I wondered is, you talk about the learning walk versus the ROAR walk. Now, the ROAR walk sounds like it's administrative a team scheduled through every classroom.
Yeah. Good question. So learning walks is what the Instructional Leadership Academy calls them. We just call them ROAR walks because it fits with our four core values, but it's the same thing. Yeah. There's, there's no, they're not separate.
That's what I was not understanding.
Yeah, sorry. It really is like in parentheses, they are learning walks. That's what they are, but we're, we're right now focused... we're, we're right now focusing on the relationships part, or the belonging part, for those walks. And yeah, it's a team of four people.
And how?
Oh, how often and where? So we've set up a rotation.
If you're, if you're teaching something, do you have a schedule that says it's your turn next Wednesday to have the team walk through, or?
We don't pre-schedule with the classroom or the teacher. So it is a bit of a surprise when we come in, but we've.
I'm just thinking of what you could disturb, whatever.
Sure. We've prepped our staff to know that there's going to be at times people walking through your classroom, we're only in there for 15 minutes at a time. But we've set up a rotation throughout our building, so every area, not necessarily every classroom, because you're in a studio with nine, or up to nine teachers, six classes, will be at some point part of a roar walk. So we've got it all mapped out for the year.
Okay, so I understand now the learning slash roar walk is an administrative and learning coach team that's rolling.
That's right.
And any other, oh, Ms. Davis.
This is kind of a, it's on a trimester, on a trimester timeline.
Mm-hmm.
Just the systems of accountability, is that what we used to have as a curriculum committee? So is that, is that like a group of teachers, administrators, community people that look at curriculum that we're going to either approve or abandon, or, you know, is that what that is? I think, I'm wondering if that's been changed.
It's a replacement of what we used to call the world's best workforce, so yes, curriculum is part of that. We also bring our school improvement information, all the world's best workforce goals, achievement and integration. And so each, we're trying to increase representation, so each school right now is working towards at least one staff member, one community family member, and one administrator that attends the quarterly meetings.
Thank you. Other? Dr. Arcan.
I mean, I'm just curious if we have any plans. I'd like to hear what the students, how they feel about the cell phone policy, because I'm wondering if it'd be a positive, that they feel like it's a good place now. That'd be interesting to hear from them.
Yeah, so we are committing to surveying our students in regards to their experience. We did, we're doing the DESA survey tomorrow, but before we leave for the holiday break, we'll have one other survey done to check in with our students. I do have listening sessions with our class officers and our student council, so I'm getting feedback. It's, can be somewhat mixed.
It'd be nice to hear about student council.
Yeah, get some actual raw data on it.
We have two students.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, we didn't introduce, so Lydia Pinehans is our student representative, and then also joining us is Tom Reese, who's our junior-year alternate student representative. And so you don't have to, but would either of you care to, I'm going to just put you on the spot. Do you have any thoughts about the cell phone policy?
I think it's not terribly enforced, like, it definitely isn't a problem like it was last year. Or last year would be like, maybe a group project, and like, people wouldn't do the project, they're just, but I'll see people on their phone a little bit, but people aren't just like.
Totally disengaging.
Yeah.
It was pretty bad last year.
Yeah.
I was surprised to, I was expecting it to just be enforced for a little bit, and then have people make a big deal out of it, and then have teachers not want to do it. So I think it's going to look pretty well.
Ms. Thompson.
I definitely think, well, I mean, first of all, I'm only taking one, like, academic class, so I'm not a good example, someone who's like in classrooms all the time, but I think, at least from my teachers specifically, they're more lenient towards juniors and seniors. He said that. It's kind of like, I could enforce it, but you guys are 17, 18, so I'm not sure. I think it's good for the underclassmen, but I think for the upperclassmen, it could be, there could be a different policy. But I also am not in the classroom, and it's really not.
True.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Lydia, you want to follow up on that? So you're a PSCO student as well.
Oh, yeah. I've had the same kids all the time.
She does go to school.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Reese. And we will move into our next discussion item, the two Lake Airs Elementary update. Dr. Gillespie and Mr. Cruzmark.
To all the members of the board, I'd like to introduce Kerry Cruzmark, Principal of Lake Airs Elementary. Give us chisels.
Good evening, everyone. Board, Chair Ellison, Dr. Kazmicek, board members. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. I was thinking back to, you know, it's been a while since I've had an opportunity to sit down and just connect with all of you in some fashion, so again, I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about Lake Airs, and kind of what, what's been going on the last few years. So I figured I would definitely be highlighting a couple key things to you all this evening. Just a quick overview, excuse me, a little bit about Lake Airs. You know, we are a pre-K5, I like to always highlight that. We have a lot of little four, four- and five-year-olds in preschool, around 395 kids. We've seen our student and our school and our student population has really changed over the past few years. You know, we have seen an increase in our students' socioeconomic status, growing to a higher level of free and reduced lunch. Our BIPOC students have really seen an increase since 21, 22's school year, and we've really seen a big growth in our students, ML students, multilingual English learners, bringing a lot of diversity, a lot of different types of learners, and really having us to really think about who our friends are in front of us, and how we need to think when we're giving instruction to best meet their needs. A couple of unique things to Lake Airs. We have been an Avid Elementary certified site for quite a few years. We did add autism spectrum disorder cluster this year, so that's brand-new. And we have been a BAR implementation site, and I'll talk about a couple of those items, Avid and BAR, in the next couple of slides here. Again, overview today, just kind of wanted to highlight these three things that kind of unique to Lake Airs. And we have about nine elementaries. Lake Airs is, of course, as you know, down on our south side of the district. Avid advancement via individual determination, which you probably have heard that, because it is also in our secondary settings. BAR, building assets, reducing risks, which again, you know, we definitely have that a little bit at our high school, but, and middle schools, but three elementaries are participating, and we're in year four of that program. And I'll share more about how that's impacted our students as well as Avid. And then a little bit about our family engagement event at the end of September, and how that went, and some highlights, and some learnings that we took away from a brief parent survey. It's always good to capture families and get an opportunity to hear their voice, so. Avid at Lake Airs, as I said, I'm sure you've heard about it, you've heard that acronym before, but again, it's kind of a great collection of best practices. A lot of times, parents who are new to our school will ask what it is, and I say, it's like, good teachers do good instructional practices all the time. Avid is just a framework that really helps us do it collectively as a building, systematically, vertically-aligned scaffold strategies, teach students purposely how they can be more engaged, increasing rigor for our students, putting that cognitive load on the students, and having them really, we like to use the word noodle through things, instead of just Google. You know, you can Google things, but noodling is that higher-level thinking, and really giving them opportunities to engage in those learning practices. So a little history, you know, we started this back in 2019 through some foundations training. Year one was 1920, and I like to highlight that Lake Airs Elementary is a K5 elementary certified site, which, you know, I'm kind of bragging here, because we're one of only a few. I've actually asked our regional Avid person to get the data. She didn't have the data, how many elementaries in Minnesota are K5? A lot of schools that are elementary Avid, there's over 70 in Minnesota, they're mostly like third, fourth, fifth, or fourth, fifth, and so she said, I'm going to bring that up at the next director's meeting that she goes to, because it was a really good question. I said, thank you, I'd really like to know, because it is very unique. But, you know, we incorporate those Avid strategies and the framework to really, you know, help our students build those academic skills that can carry on into middle school, into high school. And of course scaffolding hit based on age level. What we do in kindergarten might look a little different than what we do in fifth grade for certain strategies, but they're doing it in kindergarten, which is super incredible. The teachers have figured out how to just make it work. And of course, you know, Avid has always had that college and career readiness kind of coin phrase, or whatever, I guess is how you might say it. I really love the idea of how they've started to shift of that career piece. Obviously, our workforce has changed, and as a school in elementary, our Avid site team talks a lot about, how are we going to make this connect to our students? Because we have five, six-year-olds, 11-year-olds, you know, it's a different range of ages, and how do we help them understand what they're doing, what they're engaging in with these strategies and practices, as well as, you know, college and career? Well, what does that mean to me? Well, we figure one of the best things is curiosity. Elementary kids come with so much curiosity, giving them aspirations, asking questions, learning more about what they might be, where they might go, all the places you might go, right? And learning more about careers, not just college, because college is one way, but what are you going to do when you get there? Maybe there's different ways to find your path in life. Lake Airs also, as I said, we are a part of the, utilizing the BAR process, building assets, reducing risks. Like most of our sites, everybody is doing some kind of multi-tiered systems of support in their schools. For us, BAR was an opportunity to really take what we were doing well, and the things maybe we needed some improvements on, and, you know, bring that to our school to ultimately do a better job of serving our students when it comes to problem-solving, how to better support kids, enriching student experiences, identifying skills or need areas, and what to actually do, and the processes that go into that with more fidelity, more transparency as a school amongst our administrators, amongst our teachers. So they have more awareness of how this process works, they're not just siloed in their own world. They know what's going on, because we have different levels of teaming to help work through the support process. And I think one thing that, when Dr. Gillespie actually brought this as an opportunity to me, when I started learning more about the BAR program, the thing that captured me was the approach of a strength-based approach for students. And, you know, we know that kids sometimes come to us with growth areas, teachers are fixers, they love to, you know, they, you know, they're driven, like, we know that we want to get our students from A to B, and they would always have positive conversations, but this has just intentionally put more focus on what are the strengths that the student brings to the table? Yes, we know we're going to talk about some needs at our meeting, but what do they have? What are they bringing? What are those strengths? And to have those intentional conversations really changes the dynamic of how we take maybe some of those biases we have when we're working on a student's needs, and seeing more of that whole child, and then finding ways to enhance those strengths, give them more opportunities. And that can build confidence, and better social connections, better behavior in the classroom. So really taking a look at lots of different things in that whole child perspective. I kind of already sort of talked to this, but just, again, always looking at all the pieces. I like the visual where we talk about the learning that we need to do so that we can do better supports of our students. It never ends. We keep looping and looping and looping around in this process, evaluating, implementing new things, analyzing how things are going, and then replanning, reworking, and continue, Like anything, that's complex. Students are definitely complex. There's many factors. We have internal, external factors. Nothing is ever a straight path. We might like it to be that, but we have curves and hills and valleys throughout. I like this visual as another way to just kind of demonstrate that MTSS, those multi-tiered systems and the BAR framework, the work we do. You know, students have a need, we're working as small block teams, it's usually that grade level, first grade team, second grade team, supporting each other, coming up with goals, what they can do at their classroom level. We move into big block if students aren't really making progress that we'd like to see, which the best thing about this is a newer piece to what we didn't do, was having even more vertically-aligned conversations with a lot more intentionality. It's scheduled every X number of weeks, where a K1, 2, 3, 4, 5 teacher is sitting in, and they're talking about one or two or three kids that have been planned to be discussed, and we're hearing lots of expertise at the table, talking about what it is, that one or two things that that teacher's trying to help the student achieve, overcome, whatever it is, it could be academic, social, emotional. But again, a collective mindset of experts working together. And an example from last year, we had a student who, one of the teachers that was sitting in that big block, had a student in her class that needed something as well, and it was a kindergarten, a second grade teacher. Those two students ended up being like buddies with some structure, and if we hadn't had that intentionality of like these conversations, I don't know if we would have ever connected these two kids, but they both had an incentive because they wanted to work together, strive for a goal, and their behaviors in the classroom changed drastically. It was just like, you know, it doesn't always work that perfectly, but when it does, you definitely, you know, you tell the board about that. But again, one of those things where you're like, when those conversations happen, it's amazing what we can come to find out, and how we can work together to support our kids. And another new layer that really helps our students with BAR, for my experience in Lake Airs and our team, is we call it Community Connect, but it's a small core group of the BAR leadership team in the building, and just every week, we meet and talk about kids. Could be kids that have been through our process of small block, big block, who are working with teachers, or teams of teachers on academics or social-emotional, or, you know, we just found out a student is homeless, or there's some other high needs thing, and of course, we don't wait till Friday when we have that meeting. If we have to hit, hit go button right now, we definitely do that, but that team works very well together. And then making sure, like, we're letting the key people know who are a part of that student's life, that, to best support what's going on in their, their world. So definitely has impacted the work around our multi-tiered systems of support, much better, more transparency, teachers have a better understanding of what's happening, a lot more looping back. And I kind of threw up the icon up there, the picture of just the roundabout, because sometimes that's what we feel like, we're just like, didn't we just do this? But sometimes it takes two or three go-arounds just to really figure out our students, but not stopping. Moving into kind of the last thing I wanted to highlight was our family engagement event we did, September 24th. We didn't know how many families would show up and how many kids. And Dr. Kazmicek, I know, was there, and I saw the look on his face when he was walking in from coming out from the back recess area, I was like, wow, there's a lot of people.
Pizza line was even long.
The pizza line was extremely long, but we figured we had over 700 people there at this event, so great turnout. You know, one takeaway from that was like, whenever Lake Airs has an event, whether it's a PTO or something like this, school, musical, or concerts, they come out, they come to support the school, their children. They love to connect with the community. We are really a close-knit community, neighbors, just getting together. So, but anytime, like I said earlier, when you get parents or a key audience at your site, you know, if you have an opportunity, like, to get some data from them or ask some questions, we had a couple of quick survey questions that we asked. One was just really like, what was the thing that they really love about Lake Airs or the school? And a lot of the themes were around how they value their child's teacher, the teacher's relationship, or just the relationships in general, and the positive learning environment. That was very affirming, because I feel like our teachers are very invested in their students. We have fifth graders who go down and see their kindergarten teacher, then they see their first grade teacher, they're on the walk, and I'm usually the one going, okay, come on, we've got to get to class, you know, but how do you not let them do that? It fills their bucket, and it fills the teacher's bucket, for sure. But also, what did parents want us to know, and really it came down to, their kids have a lot. And really it came down to, their kids have a lot to them. And really, what else can we do to get to know them as individuals and all their strengths and all their interests? And really like, how can we connect that to their learning day? So we have a culture, climate committee that meets next week, I believe. And some of this feedback that we're getting, it'll be something that we'll noodle through and talk about like, you know, what do we take from, especially a part about getting to know our kids better? You know, where are our teachers at? Are there things that we could do to highlight or expand on those strengths that our students bring to the table, their interests? I think good teachers do that, but it's always good to always think and reflect on that again. Future, a little bit more about what's coming up, what's coming up in the future. This year, specific to Avid priorities, our Avid site team or Avid committee, we meet monthly. And one of the things we took away from, you know, where we are at, where things have, you know, progressed with our, our levels of implementation, was really around curriculum. And CQLA, our literacy curriculum, curriculum, excuse me, was obviously a big undertaking last year. Teachers did a great job of digging in, learning it, getting to understand all the pieces of it. But as they went through that, one of the things that the team has recognized is we really need more time with a new curriculum to really find ways to align those best practices, but those strategies that we use, or ways to, like, we like to say wickerize, you know, how can we raise the rigor in lessons? Where do we find connections in the curriculum? And that takes work and time to dig in. One nice thing is teachers have started to recognize that there are definitely lots of spots throughout the curriculum that is Avid-like. They like to say Avid-like because it's very similar, but maybe it's not quite the way Avid framework might put it, but that's okay. It's very similar, high level. What can we do to find those specific strategies or skills to highlight through the literacy curriculum? And so that's some of the work we are designing during professional development days and continue to have CITs, those grade level teams, work together to do some pre-planning because they have gone through it, now they can start planning on, how can we implement and actually documenting this unit, this lesson? Here are some ideas that we could do, some Avid strategies in, and getting that down on paper. Because when we get to next fall, we're like, what did I do last year? I should have wrote it down. Well, we're writing it down so we can remember and have a nice structure. And then also just expanding our career awareness and like just the visibility of Avid in general. Kids experiencing in the classroom, but how do we take it further so it's not just this instructional piece and bringing in more career, career lands, having speakers? We started some of that last year, teachers were having a few parents come in and speak to their career. Dr. Gillespie was a guest speaker in one of our classes. But then connecting it to the learning and what, what your schooling has done to help you do the jobs. And we've had lots of different varieties, college graduates to people who have right into the workforce, and sharing their experience and why the skills they learn now and how they transfer in the future are important. And continuing to just, you know, build that, that culture in our building. And BAR priorities, as I said, you know, we want to really continue to work on providing good strategic efforts to help support students in lots of different ways. But one of the things that the priority this year is really to take those tier-two interventions. A lot of our tier-two interventions typically happen in the classroom and really having deep dialogue and data-driven decision-making processes and action steps in the classroom in collaboration with like our intervention teachers. Teachers not just sitting in a classroom by themselves in a silo feeling unsupported, like really it's a collaborative effort. They meet periodically to talk about the students. What can we do? Do we flex group? Do I create a group in my own homeroom? How do we meet the needs of those kids in those tier-two level that are still in the classroom during what we call win time? What I need now, some kids go off to some more intensive support and others are getting broken off into the classroom doing some different kind of flexible groups. But that was a definitely area of how BAR can better support those teachers through that data-driven dialogue and being very strategic to support student growth in the And then one of our goals as a site team too is to apply to be presenter at the national conference. We'll see if we get accepted, but we feel after going through the BAR process, the learning, the training for three years going into year four, we've definitely learned a lot of things that we would tell future schools not to do, or try it this way, or be flexible. But that's part of learning, you know, learning from our mistakes and making adjustments. And if we have an opportunity, that would be something we'd love to strive to do. So we're gonna apply and see if we get selected to present at the conference. I think that is the end. If there's any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
I just have a comment. I really liked the roadmap and how it was, we went through the small blocks and big blocks and tried again and, um, especially before we get time to referral and even special education, because there are some things that I know the staff can't do when it does do for student success. That was a great graphic.
I didn't mention it, but one big part of the structured system too is our special education department is a very key member of our BAR process. And they are, they are very involved too. Where maybe in the past they were kind of like, when you need us, we're here. And it's changed drastically. They're very entrenched with like, let's, let's work together now, because these are all our kids.
Other questions? Mr. Fogi and then Dr. Neemaster.
So I just wanted to thank you. And as you shared, you have seen some changes demographically in your school. And that takes adjustment and learning and growing and growth. And you're obviously listening to your families and adjusting and monitoring. So thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you also. I really like the way BAR and Avid, you know, have fused to make a real good support system at Lake Gears. And that's a school that I did my first 11 years in, had a special place in my heart for Lake Gears. And I wonder, is it still as much of an elementary walk to school? Because I remember we had huge parent participation, whether it was volunteers or just attending what was happening, because it's also a neighborhood, a real specific neighborhood. Is that still the case or is there a lot of busing?
It's probably 50/50. You know, after the attendance boundary changes, even before that, we definitely had, you know, out of the 380, 390, you know, a good third to 50% ride the bus. And then there's a big group that are either walkers or, as it gets colder, it's, there's a lot more cars picking up their children. So.
That's the mom and dad system. Anyway, it sounds like it's going very well. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I just want to thank you again for the great work being done at Lake Gears and and to the district for using these multi-tiered systems of support. As someone who works in child welfare, that roundabout is very necessary because sometimes that kid might not necessarily need an IDP or some kind of intensive support system put in place, but just some temporary, it depends what's happening in the home, right? Did a parent just lose a job and they're struggling until the next job comes along? Have they lost a family? Is there more intensive things happening at home? So to see that we're continually reassessing is great. And then having BAR and Avid in our, having Avid in the elementary schools is just fantastic to me because the younger, we can show kids opportunities into the future and get them thinking about what do they want to be when they grow up? Yeah, even in kindergarten, they can start thinking about those ideas, especially for all of our students. But to give that thought to a child who might be living in an environment that isn't as friendly as other students in our district are living in, to have something to like think about and to dream about in a future way is very beneficial to that child's ability to hold on to some little bit of, I can do this when I get, when I pull, right? It's so important. And just knowing that we're looking at all the ways our kids are struggling and then being able to find, like the, moving away from the deficit language into the strength-based language is really important to helping those kids see where they're doing great in school or where they're doing better than other areas. And then still focusing on the areas obviously that they need improvement, but really focusing on that strength-based approach is really crucial to those students because they need that. And in a school that has that 46% free and reduced lunch rate, there's students in there who really need those supports in place. So it's wonderful to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we will move into our last discussion item, V3, Elementary Immersion Program Update. I think Dr. Kazmicek's gonna start us off.
I'll just kick it off because everybody's coming up. So we're gonna, I'm gonna lay out the recommendation for you here at the outset. We're gonna tell you how we got to where we are and then also where we're headed as we plan to implement a new program in the fall of '25. So the recommendation that we presented to you tonight and then all the background information is that we establish a Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program in White Bear Lake area schools. We offer that at Otter Lake Elementary and the Coastland National Elementary beginning with the 2025, 2026 school year. And I think, Tim, you're gonna, you're gonna kick it off now with your team? I think maybe everybody else just. Yeah, we'll get started with, how do we get, go to the next slide. So recall that in, at an April board meeting, we presented to the board the notion that we would begin, develop a steering committee to get to work and look at what are the possibilities of developing an elementary immersion program in White Bear Lake and what would that look like? And we suggested at that time, we'd come back to you in October and report and with possible recommendation. And so here we are tonight. We also identified in April that this is really consistent with our strategic plan, especially those middle two bullets. We will promote, encourage, and support students' personal learning experiences and aspirations. We will ensure our organization continuously transforms to fulfill our mission. As you hear more tonight, you'll, I think you'll see how those things, this plan really fits into those two bullets. Okay. Ian Ibrahim is, was the co-chair of this committee. She's gonna talk about these next few slides.
So as you see here for the White Bear Lake Spanish Dual Immersion Steering Committee, the names of the committee members are up there. And the group represented a diverse skill set. And collectively, each person was a strong leader in our district. And we collectively fully committed, worked, committed to the work that we were doing. So our purpose for the steering committee was to really focus, was to establish the framework for a dual Spanish immersion program within White Bear Lake area schools. The committee determined key parameters for the program to guide future stakeholders' engagement efforts and to help inform the recommendations that will be made to the board today. So for the framework, it was really based on the best practices from the research. The framework is informed by research on Spanish Dual Immersion. And then it focused on proven methodologies and strategies that drive student success and looked at cultural competencies. Steering Committee, ooh, sorry, Pam. You're good. So the questions you see up there, those three questions, we really dug deep into research. We looked at what are the best practices in Spanish Dual Immersion program? We know Spanish Dual Immersion program is good, but like why? So we looked into research to really figure that out. We identified key findings. We considered questions we might explore as a system and outlined our next steps. And then the second question we looked at was, if we did immersion, where would it be? So what we did here was, we looked at different data, we looked at different scenarios, building capacity. And then lastly, we looked at what are the needs and desires of the community? So for the first phase was from May to August. And then for this part, the district leadership, leadership team studied the elementary language immersion program models and site location within our district. And then for the second phase, from September to October, the district leadership was to develop and recommend implementation plan. And then our original plan was actually for tonight's discussion to be followed up within an action item at the November meeting. But then after our discussion with families and planning sessions with our steering committee, we are confident in a more modified timeline and we're asking for you to take action on the recommendation on our next, on our next agenda item.
All right. Hi, my name is Julian Stanky. I'm the principal at Birch Lake and a proud member of the steering committee. I'm here to help out a bit. Anne Chant will leave a little early tonight. So I get to talk to you about the benefits of this dual, dual immersion program for our White Bear Lake area students. So starting out with the academic benefits, the research suggests that bilingualism can boost cognitive functions like problem solving, critical thinking, and creativity. It also, studies have shown that over time, students in dual immersion programs often outperform their peers in standardized tests, especially in math and science. And then dual immersion can, can help children develop better executive functioning skills such as planning, organizing, and multitasking. When we look at the benefits for language and cultural benefits, we're really looking at what we've learned in our research and meeting with other programs that have been successful already here in the metro is three big pieces, being belligerent, bicultural, and most of all bilingual. And so through those, children become more proficient in both English and Spanish, which opens up a wide range of opportunities in their future. Their exposure to Spanish language and culture can foster a deeper understanding and appreciation of diverse life experiences and perspectives. Bilingualism can help children become more globally minded and understand, understanding of different cultures. And then for the social, emotional benefits, learning a new language has been proven to show, that can boost children's self-esteem and confidence. Bilingualism can enhance communication and interpersonal skills, leading to stronger relationships, which we know is at the core of student success at school. And the challenges of learning a new language can help children develop resilience and adaptability over their time in the program. And then finally, with the future opportunities, there's career advantages that bilingualism opens up. There's proficiency in multiple languages can be advantageous for admission to prestigious universities and graduate programs. And bilingualism can make traveling and living abroad more accessible and enjoyable. So we know that the world is becoming a more accessible place and this helps prepare all of our students an opportunity to relish in that.
Thank you, Julian. I get to pick it up from here. I'm John Leidner, principal at Matoska International School. And some of the other research that we found that was the dual immersion programs are desired by our families in the community. The world language opportunities have long been an interest in White Bear Lake, you know, see a lot of heads nodding, and we've had conversations for a while and we're really excited for this opportunity. An increasing number of families are looking for unique programming, including immersion around the metro area. The number of Spanish-speaking heritage language families in White Bear Lake, it continues to grow. We're very excited for that. And we also know that there are immersion daycares existing even right here in our own community, meaning there's a strong interest for this. We know that Spanish Dual Immersion is good for the White Bear Lake area schools. The Spanish Dual Immersion program align with our strategic plan, including creating a safe and nurturing environment for all students focused on high-quality instruction and educational excellence, personalizing instruction, ensuring each student realizes their own unique talents and abilities. We also know that we in White Bear Lake, we strive to meet the needs, hopes, and dreams of all the families that we serve. I've been really privileged to be here for a while and know that's one of the things I'm most proud of with White Bear Lake is we don't coast. We are all looking, always looking forward to meeting the needs of our families, to doing right by them, listening to our families and doing the best to meet, meet their hopes and dreams for their children. And we know that immersion programs are attractive to families and strengthening our future enrollments. And again, we, we as a school district have always been about being a thriving school district and not just coasting along. So part of our process was to hold a family listening session. As Ian mentioned, on the 21st, we had, we held a listening and engagement session. Over 45 people attended. It was an amazing turnout. It was really exciting to be down here in the room and it was quiet for a minute and all of a sudden it just filled up lots of excitement, universally supported and a lot of enthusiasm. lot of enthusiasm. I had a chance to share with, with the Matoska PTO and there was a lot of chair bouncing when they were listening to about this potential. And we asked them three different questions during that night. The first question, what are your hopes and dreams for your child? And, you know, academics and learning was very important to our families, you know, irregardless of dual immersion, but that, that academics and learning was super strong. They wanted their children to be happy and healthy. They wanted their children to be socially connected. And importantly, they wanted their children to develop a global mindset. The next question we asked was what excites you most out having a Spanish Dual Immersion option in White Bear Lake? And families talked about the cultural diversity perspective that that would bring, developing language skills in both Spanish and English and continuing their bilingual journey. We spoke with families that were heritage speakers. We spoke with families where their children, their, their first dual language experience and then, you know, also those families, for example, at the childcare where they have already an in-depth dual language experience and they're wanting to continue that. And then the last question we asked, we asked, what would you hope to see out of a Spanish Dual Immersion program for your child? And our families there said they wanted a culturally well-rounded child. They were looking for strong academics and learning. They wanted their children to develop that global mindset. And of course, you know, one of the goals of a dual, a dual immersion program is being bilingual. So I think I turn it over to Tim, where we are now.
Absolutely, yeah. And so the recommendation is that we, as Dr. Kazmierzak said, establish a dual language immersion program in the White Bear, White Bear Lake area schools to be offered at Otter Lake Elementary and Matoska International Elementary beginning with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. You can advance that. Choosing the Otter Lake and Matoska, lots of discussion on that. And, you know, really, a couple of things that came up. One is we have a northern location and a southern location, which is good for families. But also schools that have capacity in our build, in our district, not all of our schools are very big, our elementary schools, especially Otter Lake has significant capacity and Matoska, while it has traditionally been pretty full, we're seeing some changes in kindergarten enrollment at Matoska as you look, as you look ahead to birth rates in that attendance boundary. But also, we think that Matoska families are, would be more apt to adopt immersion, more globally minded. And we've heard from families, Matoska families who have expressed interest in immersion programs. We think it's a good fit for Matoska. From a budget perspective, there are some budget considerations and some benefits to, budget benefits to, to an immersion program. Planning and curriculum development, we have some major categories there. There's some startup costs, especially as we do, as we explore, we need some substitute time for teachers on our, on our program committee. For workdays, we also would have some curriculum writing. Each year when we start up, as we add a grade level, that'd be some additional curriculum writing time in summer. Professional development, we already have budgets for professional development staffs who would just be extra. So that's a fairly small professional development amount on there, but all of our schools have professional development budgets and so this would just be in addition to what we already have. Materials and resources, again, we already have materials and resources for all of our students, so there may be some time where we need to pay a little extra to get Spanish version. So those fit in, fits in there. Very little in facilities considerations, just some bilingual signage. We think teacher recruiting, we'll spend some on, we'll be posting those positions soon and before December. And so we are hoping to have robust number of applicants excited to teach in White Bear Lake. Transportation, we already bus district-wide to Matoska, so minimal if any increase there. We wouldn't be busing the northern half roughly of the district to Otter Lake, so there'd be some increased cost there. And then contingency, there's of course unexpected expenses that'll come up during this process, there's built in for just to be safe. For a startup cost of about a hundred and forty-eight thousand, but the key line on the bottom there is the enrollment gain break even point. And so we, we know that we have families who are looking for immersion programming and they're gonna, they're gonna attend an immersion school. Many of them have told us that and have said, we're really excited about the possibility of keeping our kids in White Bear Lake. And so the break even point, about fifteen students the first year and then about twenty-two going on from there. We really believe that those are really realistic numbers. We're, we're gonna blow those numbers out of the water in terms of keeping students in our district and potentially some open enrollment possibilities too. When we go next, well, we're starting the, go ahead, we're starting the phase four with the program design team and they'll focus on some key areas, including curriculum instruction assessment. Our teaching and learning team will dig in deep in that area, family and community engagement, how does it, what are best practices in immersion schools around the metro, the family engagement? And then of course staffing and professional development, our HR department's already working on staffing and our teaching and learning team on the professional development in that, that group. And along the way, there will be family focus groups. We've asked parents already who have attended the sessions to consider in signing up to be one of our family focus, or one of our family focus groups. We can keep them engaged throughout the process and understand what their interests are. Okay, when we presented to our parents on October twenty-first, we developed some FAQs that we, questions we knew people would have, such as will transportation be provided? And I shared a little bit about that. We'd be adding some transportation in the northern half of the district. Will, we won't be transporting open enrolled students just because we don't transport open enrolled students right now. So just for district families. When will the enrollment into the program begin? Are, we were just doing kindergartners this year, so our kindergarten enrollment begins December sixteenth and families will be able to register for kindergarten and select immersion as one of the options. So it won't be a real complicated process. We'll be recruiting all, promoting our kindergarten enrollment across the district. Immersion will be one of those opportunities. How will enrollment be prioritized? Our school district families will be the first priority when we enroll. We know that there will be some open enrollment interests and we'll put those off to the side until we've gotten through the period of initial enrollment. Then once we've, we've gotten past that period, typically around, it would be January fifteenth, is when we would then start to look at open enrollment. But our families, we would fill this up with school district families first. What will world language opportunities for immersion students look like beyond elementary? And some of the parents who are interested in this program have asked us that question as well. And we would anticipate that there would be a middle school and then a high school element to the immersion program. We'll let, we don't need to make that decision on exactly what that'll look like yet. I think we'll, as we get to know the program and as the families engage, we'll understand what people want. Most school districts who have an elementary program and then extend it to, do extend it to middle school and then onto high school. And then will this program replace other elementary programming, including international vocabulary programming at Matoska? And the answer to that is no. Immersion actually fits really well with IB and, which has a language requirement that we already offer at Matoska, and so this will only strengthen our IB program at Matoska. So what can families expect? We'll be rolling out our kindergarten enrollment process. They'll be receiving direct mailings in December. That will open up on December sixteenth and so they'd register as they always have. Again, like I mentioned just a moment ago, open enrollment won't be considered until after January fifteenth when our district families have had an opportunity to register. And the communications department is just, is that posted here or would be posting?
It is, it says information coming soon, but it will be not very soon as well.
Posted very soon, yeah, online on our website. This, that's just a list of resources where we, as Ibrahim mentioned, we did our research and dug into some research. It's just the list and so it's available for people who want to look at it.
If you click on it, it takes you back to Google Drive. So if you click on it, it has like different titles and then there's like a bunch of different articles.
Okay.
Right.
I bet you have some questions.
I bet we do. All right, any questions? Ms. Thompson.
Just a question, like what is the path? What are we looking at for first year? How do we have an idea of how many students? We can't like just say it explodes and everybody wants to sign up right away for our immersion program. What, do we have a limit of what we can take?
Well, we're targeting sixty at each school site.
Three class periods, like?
Every three sections, yeah.
And then it's just starting with kindergarten and then we would add the first grade the next year and so on and so forth.
Yeah. So in twenty thirty, then we'd be adding the secondary element to it at middle school.
It's just great overall. I'm really excited for this. This is forward-thinking education. When I look in the job market, you know, like almost all of them want you to have a second language, whether it's Spanish or whatever it is the language is looking for. So I think this is just another asset for our students to be able to, like my daughter didn't take, you know, we had Spanish in elementary school, but not to listen to all of what we're talking about here. And so she hopes to graduate with her college, you know, with her certification in Spanish, but it'll all happen in her high school years, which we know if this could have happened at a younger time, it would just make the process, it really embeds it into who you are and how you think about everything if we can start it younger. So I'm just really excited to see what this program does in the district. I think it's gonna be, I think it's really gonna be amazing for us. So thank you, the team.
Other questions? Dr. Arcand.
I have some quick questions. So as I said, I have a kindergarten coming next year, but I don't sign up. And a third grade, I say, boy, I should have gotten in there. Is there an opportunity then to add in the third grade or is it too late or how does that work?
So I've done some research around that and we still, some of the stuff we have, you know, still to figure out, but some programs allow students to enter later, but they have to take a certain language proficiency to make sure it's a successful experience. Other kids might be coming and families from a different immersion program, so we have some things to learn around that. Also, some of our families are wondering, is it possible to accelerate the secondary options because there are families that wanted to come to White Bear Lake? So we're excited about that and those family focus groups are really gonna be key for us as we dive into it. But it does seem like some immersion programs figure that out. But again, there has to be some level of language proficiency so we make sure that the students can meet the outcomes of the program.
Thank you. Other questions? Oh, Dr. Newmesser.
As originally a language teacher with Spanish and German, I just think it's a great opportunity that it's one more path we can add, but it's also one more support for your bilingual family. And I, I know for many years, I told every child I ran across as I was a media specialist, your language at home, you're gonna be the best choice when people look for an employee no matter where, if you're bilingual. And so I just think it's another good path we offer for folks and whether it comes from a family heritage. I used to say to kids, look at your last name, you would be an excellent German student. You know, there's a heritage. If it's your background, you maybe remember grandma barely spoken, but I did. But I do know that it clicks into many places, that I think it strengthens a child's self-esteem as well as being wonderful for developing learning skills. So I'm glad we're willing and I think this is a, a good bite to start without jumping into the deep end right away. Congrats.
Other questions? Ms. Daniels?
I think it's great, I've had emails and conversations with community members over the years and this has been a topic that's been in our community for a long, I've desired for parents for a long time. So really excited about it. Thank you for all those links because I did access the links and read a lot about dual immersion programs because I have a lot to learn and it was just really interesting to read all the benefits of the immersion.
I've got a couple of questions. One, how, as we're thinking about, we start with kindergarten and we had first grade and we had second grade, what is that gonna look like for the staff who are currently at Matoska and Otter?
So we've had a lot of conversations. We know, you know, one of the things that in our conversation with HR department and we know with attrition, no one will be out of a job. There's always been plenty of attrition for, you know, in our White Bear Lake schools. One of the benefits of a school district our size is that everyone will have a job. How that looks, you know, in the, in the distance future, we'll have to see how that unfolds as we know how many students are enrolled and how many sections do we have, how many teachers retire, how many teachers decide to, you know, move to other schools, which are constant conversations we have every year. But we have talked with our teachers and staff and assured them that, you know, no one's gonna be, you know, this isn't going to push anybody out. I know that it'll build our Matoska staff stronger as we've talked about that and there's actually a fair amount of excitement and interest in the staff that I've talked to.
Good. And the other question I have is about kind of the long-term trajectory of this. And I appreciate there's already been discussion about how this would look in secondary because I'm thinking about IB in particular and how a couple of years ago, the district had middle school IB and then pulled it back. And so what is your, what is the plan for thinking toward middle school so that it doesn't happen again, learning from our, you know, our past?
Yeah, we learned a lot from the past, but the other piece is immersion looks very different at the middle school. So it's not, you're not starting a whole school where every single class is in Spanish. What typically school districts have had is they have some sort of language arts or heritage Spanish, which we already have in our system in terms of a class that we've tried to start. We just haven't yet had the enrollment. And then usually it's other, another content area. So a content area like social studies, maybe taking a world history class and then that's actually, you know, given in the target language of Spanish, but then the rest of their day would be English. And so it really is thinking through, again, with our families, because there is a lot in that picture, there was a lot of expertise of people who had done their research, had ideas, knew what worked in other districts. We have a lot to learn from, but that would be what it looks like. And then students, there are opportunities in terms of taking college classes once you get to the high school and you can earn quite a bit of, of college credit to support you in that, in your, you know, in your language. And our students are interested in heritage Spanish, so that's where I think we might be able to accelerate some of those opportunities for students and families.
Yeah, I, I went overseas for my job last year and I was the only person there who did not speak two, three, or four other languages. And so I think this is really a good path for our students because everything is global now, so it's wonderful. Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Thompson.
Not a question, but just a comment on that overall. I'm just thinking about it all. It also brings an acceptance to kids who may grow or live in a home where their parents or family members don't speak English, right? But then they come to school and might feel some shame or just, you know, to be able to see and go into the school and see their language being taught to other students as like a celebrated way and something people actually want to learn can help them remove that shame of being othered. Just my own heritage, my grandfather came here when he was nine from Mexico with his mom and his brother and, and he never taught his language to anybody else in the family. So my dad didn't learn it, my, my dad's father didn't learn it, like I didn't learn it. We just, we didn't learn it. It was, you're, you can't be that and also be here and be accepted. So seeing that happen in our district allows students to say, oh, my culture is also, my culture can be my Hispanic culture and also my American culture and we can celebrate both of those together. And I just really think that is so important for our kids to see right away. So thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much for all of this time and work.
Thank you.
And so we were gonna move to our single operational item, action on elementary immersion program.
Okay, yeah. So you disturbed the presentation and now we're asking you to take action. The recommended action is to move to approve a Spanish dual language immersion program in White Bear Lake area schools to be offered at Otter Lake Elementary and Matoska International Elementary, beginning with the 25, 26 school year.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
No, no.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second?
Second.
A second, a third, yeah. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And the motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you again for everyone for being here and for our students, liaisons to be here. Remember to vote on Tuesday. You can get your sample ballot and your polling place on Minnesota Secretary of State website. With that, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Ellison, I move for adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And we adjourn.